Wrongly, sorry, we moved the Public Works Committee meeting to order. If you could take attendance, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Kurialli.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sismarski.
Here.
And Alderman Woods.
Here.
Great. First, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes dated June 9th, 2022.
Make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next up, report and recommendation. There is some due diligence that still needs to be had on this topic, so I'll have Director Lang explain that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. So we had the bid opening for the fiscal year 2023 Capital Road Program this week. As you recall, that program is much larger than in previous years due to the expectation that we'll be receiving $3 million in state capital bill funding. However, several external factors such as higher-than-anticipated inflation rates, oil prices, labor issues, and the like have led to bids coming back much higher than were anticipated during capital preparation. That increase, in conjunction with several alternates that we're discussing, leaves us with some decisions to make as to how to best allocate our funding. So our recommendation to the committee tonight is to make the motions, pass this along to the council level, with the expectation that staff will confer along with our consultants, and come back with a modified program that provides the most bang for our buck, so to speak.
Thank you. So while you, your team is not prepared to discuss tonight, I would like to make a motion to move forward, allowing Director Lang that week needed to connect with Brad. Brad is on vacation to look through and discuss several alternatives. There is, this is a time-sensitive manner if these projects want to, if they're going to be done before the, well, in the fall season, because our next meeting won't, if we don't do it here, our next meeting won't be till the middle of August. So you can imagine what that does to the timeline. So that is my long motion. Is there a second? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Kurialli.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yeah.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. And then finally, an approval of an agreement between the City of Wood Dale and Robinson Engineering for the fiscal year 2023 management of the industrial pretreatment program in an amount not to exceed $100,000. That would be my motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Kurialli.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings: one, city signs on August 11th; water distribution master plan on August 11th; patching and crack ceiling, August 11th. Exciting stuff, be here, August 11th. Are there any other items we'd like to add? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the Public Works Committee meeting.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Next, I'll call the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee to order. Let the mentaker reflect the same members are present. First, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 12th, 2020, Planning and Zoning Building Committee.
Make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions, corrections, changes? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, report and recommendation, amendment to special use for planned unit development, PUD, for the Radcliffe, for Radcliffe located at 276 East Irving Park Road. Who's gonna take that?
Actually, Senior Planner Chair has been assigned that.
Taken away.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just gonna pull up our presentation real quick. So, as it was noted, this is regarding an amendment to a special use petition that was submitted to the city. I will begin just with a brief introduction of the site itself. So the subject property is located at 276 East Irving Park Road. A lot of us know as the Radcliffe or memory care, and it's gone through a couple different names in the past, but currently is known as Radcliffe Senior Housing. This is just the platter survey of the property. We have an existing structure with improvements on site. The amendment that was requested as part of this petition does not request any of the physical modifications to the building, so what we're talking about is just amendment to the use. The subject property is a little bit over 2.7 acres in size. As I mentioned, there is an existing building on site, six stories high. The first floor is really meant for support services, and then the upper floors two through six are for memory care, assisted, and independent living. The subject property is zoned TCB, which stands for Town Center Business District, and under the comprehensive plan, land use map, the designation is for townhouse and multifamily residential. So that is the land use. I do want to point out that there is a special use for a planned unit development that was approved in 2012, and this was specifically to allow assisted living and memory care facilities. So that was a special use for planned unit development. The request in front of the committee today is to essentially amend the PUD to allow a change or expansion of use. And more specifically, it's an amendment to ordinance O12023 for planned unit development special use to allow for the conversion of the fourth floor of Radcliffe facility from assisted living and memory care to a secured floor providing residential, structured, educational, and fully-supervised program housing up to 60 adolescents ages 14 through 20 who are currently living in the Illinois foster care system. So that is, that was a request of the applicant. In terms of the staff review, the unified development ordinance doesn't really have that particular use that's being proposed, listed as a permitted use in the TCB zoning district. However, because this is a planned unit development, the PUD regulations allow exceptions related to use, so that's how this request is being considered. And in terms of the comprehensive plan, the specific use is not really addressed within the comprehensive plan. The public hearing in front of the Community Development Commission was held on June 27th, 2022. I will note that the original meeting was actually scheduled for May, but due to the number of people that show up, we were over on room capacity, so the meeting in June was held at the junior high. We had over 100 people that were present, and 17 people provided public comment. CDC made a recommendation to approve with three conditions, and they're listed on the screen, but essentially, the first one notes that the applicant has to obtain and submit to the city all of the licenses required for the program. The second one states that the petitioner has to abide by all of the representations that were made during the public hearing in terms of administration of the program. And the third one was a condition to require the petitioner to appear before the city council on annual basis to review the application and special use granted. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Bond, did you want to make a statement before we move?
Yes, briefly, the applicant will have an opportunity to make a brief presentation to the committee and then any members of the public who wish to make comment. We would just ask if you could fill out a, there's a green comment card over there. Hand those in. They will be called by the chair of the committee. This is public comment. The public comment rules in place, that have been in place for the city now for many, many years, and is in accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Everyone is provided an opportunity to make public comment. It's not a public debate or discussion. You can state your comments for the consideration of the committee. It's limited to three minutes. Everybody will have an opportunity to get a chance to speak. The applicants can get in a little more latitude, and direct your comments to the chair of the committee and not to either the applicant or any individual alderman. And that way, everybody got a chance to speak. If someone's already, you signed up for public comment, and someone has already commented on that particular area, you can simply say that yours is the same. If you want to repeat it, you certainly can. So those are the rules as we proceed forward. So, thank you, and obviously, maintain stability throughout the proceeding, so there's no disruption in the ability of the committee to do its job. Thank you.
That being said, Mr. Semeca, if you want to go up?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to make a brief presentation. My name's Alan, and I own and operate the Radcliffe. I purchased it with a partner about, almost two years ago. The project is intergenerational engagement. The idea is to enhance the lives of seniors with engagement, hope, and an important sense of purpose. This is for our parents and kids without parents. There's a lot I can talk about. Stanford University's Center for Longevity has been working on this for about 10 years. We've been carefully crafting our side of this for about a year and a half. But let me get right to the part that matters: safety. Safety inside our community and safety in Wood Dale. Kids 14 to 21 years old, you're out when they're, 14 to 20, they're out when they're 21, will live with 36 full-time employees on the first floor, on the fourth floor, separate from seniors. But what's more important are the kinds of kids that get into this program. This is not a second chances program. This is about seniors and intergenerational engagement. It only works with great kids. I can't take every kid. So we've worked very hard to organize who's allowed. No crime, no drugs, no alcohol, good grades. You gotta be a pretty resilient kid if you had no parents, and no crime, no drugs, no alcohol, and you're still getting good grades. In addition, they have to raise their hands and say they want to be part of the Radcliffe Vocational Academy, where they'll sign off on a handbook and a code of ethics and a code of honor, and get their careers started. This is certainly not for all 21,000 kids in the Illinois Youth and Care Program. It's for a very, very select few. But kids in care have rights. Those rights are covered by a typical group home. So I've partnered with one. To stay at the Radcliffe is a privilege. If the kid becomes a problem, they're out. They have rights, and they would be sent to a typical group home, where they have all these rights. It's a privilege to be here, and a privilege to be in a program where they're getting their careers on track. We've worked hard to find local businesses funding to train young people. We can connect kids with this training money, build their careers. They'll have to do the volunteering in our facility, they'll have to do volunteering out in the Wood Dale community, the way we did generations ago. We worked hard to make sure this isn't a burden to local taxpayers. There's a law on the books from 1965 that not only funds their educations, but funds their educations 120%. Stanford University will be with us for two years, studying the happiness of seniors and documenting it, so the story can be shared with senior living experts around the country, giving purpose and enhancement to the lives of seniors. Starting right here in Wood Dale, we can change senior living nationwide. Anyone that works in this industry knows that this industry is ready for change, and certainly ready for improvement. There's an epidemic of loneliness in age-segregated houses. Right here in Wood Dale, not out somewhere at Shady Pines in Peoria, but right here in Wood Dale, 60% of our seniors got less than one hour of visitors last month. These are beautiful people with beautiful families that simply can't get here. The same loneliness would be true of young people with no families. We're just trying to put these two silent, invisible groups of people together. Anyone who's ever had a grandparent or been a grandparent understands the important value of this intergenerational relationship. I want to thank so many for their support. Some started out strongly opposed, many started out strongly opposed. I want to thank the CDC for their thoughtful series of questions, and it was about a four-hour meeting. I want to thank them, and the seniors in our building, want to thank them for their 4-2 vote, which we found to be very supportive. I want to thank all the people that have offered to volunteer. I'm here to answer questions. I've heard a lot of misconceptions about the project. I've heard a lot of things about the project that anyone should be against. I want to assure you that I understand that my community has a really sensitive population in it. I've worked really hard to sort out ways to choose who gets in the program to enhance the lives of the seniors that live there. If I couldn't, our residents would simply move out. I should be most concerned about who gets in. I'm right at the front of this. If there's a problem with my seniors, they're all on month-to-month leases. They would simply move out and stop paying rent, which I'm dependent on to pay our employees, taxes, and everything else. We have a chance here to produce a world-class program with world-class talent right here in Wood Dale. I'm happy to answer any questions, and certainly happy to add any more ideas you folks or anybody else might have to this wonderful program. Thanks for the time, and thanks for tolerating my very abbreviated presentation. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Semeca. Next is Becky Greeley.
Greeley?
Greeley?
Hi, my name's Becky Greeley. I make my living at the Radcliffe, and I have for over five years now, before it was built. I lease apartments to our seniors coming in. I'm very proud of our community, and I enjoy the services that we provide to our seniors and the way that we're able to enhance their lives. When I heard about this program, probably like a lot of people, it shook me up a bit. I was not at all certain or confident about it, I will admit that. One of the biggest problems for me was how do I speak with families about this coming in? Obviously, as a person who leases the apartments, that could present quite a challenge. The more we talked about it, the more I understood about the program. The pivotal moment for me was when somebody explained that there are really two channels of kids in our system. There are criminal justice kids, and there are youths in care. We're talking about youths in care. I think most recently, we all saw a news piece about a child who was left homeless by a recent tragic event, or not homeless, but parentless, let's put it that way, that, you know, these are the kids that we're talking about, and it took me a lot of time to learn this, but these are youths in care, and they need, they need guidance, and they need somebody to launch them into life. So the more I heard about that, the more I was on board with it. In speaking to families that have come through, that have toured, I have not met any resistance, and I will be the first to say that the first conversation I had with family, I think my knees were knocking, just waiting for them to run out the door. I have not heard resistance. We have continued to move people in, and they have been happy families. Moreover, my father-in-law lives there. There's no way that I could go back to my family if I didn't believe wholly in this program and explain to them that I was exposing my father-in-law, their father, their grandfather, to something that wouldn't be completely safe and that wouldn't benefit him. It's a wonderful program. Our people need it, and I hope you guys will consider approving it.
Excellent. Thank you. Next, Diana Kraus.
Hi, my name is Dina Kraus. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I first heard about this on May 9th, and let me tell you, when I heard about it, I was dead set against it. I was like, hell no, not in Wood Dale, because what was being said online was horrific. They were talking these are juvenile delinquents, and a whole bunch of misconceptions. And after about three hours of watching all of this, I closed my laptop, I picked up the phone, and I called the Radcliffe, and I asked to speak with the owner. And Alan graciously agreed to meet with me. He actually had an open-door policy several times for residents to come in and learn about the program, not what's being said. And after hearing the proposal and what it actually entailed, my thought process completely changed. My thought was, my grandmother, may she rest in peace, she died in 2020, she would have loved that. She was in manor care in Algro Village, and we're in Wood Dale. Most of my family is in Wood Dale, so we got to go there often. But so many residents didn't have that, and they were so lonely, and just the short interactions I would have with them, they were grateful for. I can only imagine what purpose this would give the seniors at the Radcliffe, not to mention how it would change the lives of these youths being brought in. My daughter's autistic. My biggest fear is if something were to happen to me, that nobody would take her, and she would be in this position. And to know that there's someplace out there for kids like this, where it could not only benefit them, but the seniors, and to think about this. This is a pilot program, as I call it. If this, if this is approved, and it's done properly, this could go nationwide. Wood Dale would be a shining star. I'm so tired of hearing the false rumors of what this is supposed to be, and I don't know what the aldermen have thought, because I've messaged each one of you, and I didn't get a response. I understand there's procedures, I get that, but I just think it's something that really needs to be considered, because if what they're proposing on paper, I'm assuming if it's approved, they can't change it once it's approved. So what is there to lose on giving a chance for these youths and seeing how it affects these seniors? You know, I'm 50, I'm gonna be 53. Some of you aren't spring chickens anymore. One day, it could be you in there. Wouldn't you want to know that you, you know, you had the opportunity, have some type of engagement with someone if your family couldn't be there? I know I do. So I just really hope that you would take into consideration and pull those false rumors that you're hearing, because I know a lot of you have heard it. Tonight, for example, I heard an alderman had told a business that these were going to be all-black kids moving in here, and I was offended. I was absolutely offended by that. And these kids aren't coming from the city, they're coming from DuPage County. It could be someone that we already know that, you know, was taken out of an abusive family, or their parents died. So I just really hope that you give careful thought to this, because I've heard more positives than negatives. So that's what I have to say. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next, Emily, and I can't.
That's okay. Gora.
Gora, okay.
Yeah, so my name's Emily, and I am a clinical nurse liaison with a hospice agency, and that is how I came to know Alan and the Radcliffe, through seeing patients there and heard about his great idea. I'm here because through my personal and professional experience, I see the value of the intergenerational relationships. I was a licensed foster parent for eight years, and through the training that I had there and the experiences with the other foster parents, I learned so much about the importance of adding that piece to the lives of these foster kids. We were trained to encourage aunts and uncles and grandparents to be part of the lives of these foster kids, and the value that that brought to them. It not only brings value to the children's lives, but obviously, the seniors as well. It gives those seniors a glimpse into the lives of modern children and what they're experiencing, experiencing, and how they can compare that to their own, and they learn, and learn compassion towards these kids and what they're facing. Children can't learn from YouTube and Google things that they can learn from seniors. All of us, some of us have had probably poor grandparents, some of us had fabulous grandparents, and they've learned so much. And the beautiful thing about this personal relationship is they can ask questions and learn things, and the seniors can teach them how to play peonockle, and they can do things that they couldn't get if they didn't have those. And obviously, foster children don't have that in their natural life, so it has to be introduced in some way. Children really don't have an opportunity to be with senior population. If they're in school, their, their teachers aren't going to be seniors, because they've already retired, so they need to have it in an artificial way, if that's, if that's possible. One thing about foster children and seniors, they're, they're both kind of an overlooked segment of the population. At seniors' age, and like what Alan talked about, they might not have visitors, they're lonely. Obviously, foster kids don't have anybody to bounce ideas off. They might be many kids in a group home where they don't get the undivided attention that they could get from a senior. In my hospice role is where I've seen these seniors. I used to be a field nurse myself, and I would be in homes where they haven't had a visitor in a long time. They've had to had paid caregivers to come and be part of their lives, and they are lonely. Oftentimes, even with, as I see the end of life coming for these patients, and I see them pass, the young generation, the family members, are the most moved and saddened by the loss of this grandparent, because they're never going to have that again. They're never going to have that relationship as a young child. So when I heard about this concept, I was, I was moved to tears when I met Alan, and I felt like this is the perfect relationship to serve two communities that have, have nobody to advocate for them. So I certainly hope that you will consider this awesome groundbreaking idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Magdalena Popper.
Perez.
Perez.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Perez. I am a clinical psychologist and owner of Luna Behavioral Health Clinic, and I heard about this idea about a month ago, when Alan introduced me to it. And it was literally a posted idea, I thought, right? Like, after I looked into the research of it, which I'll speak very briefly on, not to bore you, I couldn't help but think, like, why has not anyone else thought about this before? Because sincerely, if you do look at the research, and again, I am a shrink, so please excuse the jargon, but intergenerational interaction is a therapeutic intervention, not only for the elderly, but also for the children that we're going to be placing in there. And there's research to show this. If you just pause for a second, okay? As we get older, one of the things that we begin to lose is really our roles and our responsibilities. Like even I, right now, I have two girls, one's 13 and one's 11. And one of the responsibilities that I've happily given up is I don't have to untangle hair very often anymore. Okay? But that's a responsibility that I once had, that I am now giving up. As people get older, those responsibilities become much, much longer, okay? So by the time they do get to live in assisted facility, they really don't have a lot of responsibilities, and unfortunately, because of that, a lot of their identity is lost as well. Now, you couple that with what Alan said earlier right now, which is that 60% of the residents had how much interaction in the last week? Does anyone remember the number?
Last, the last month.
Last month, I'm sorry. God's even worked. The last month was less than an hour. So can you imagine not having, like, your own identity that you once held, the responsibilities that you've once held, and the amount of connection, human genuine connection that you're having, this less than one hour a month? Again, yes, I am a shrink, I get this, but sincerely, objectively, your mental health would be impacted. And one thing that we all know as we learn more about dementia is that if you really, we should all know this, if you really want to ward off dementia, you should always just try to stay cognitively active, right? Do puzzles, talk, do brain puzzles, et cetera. So you can imagine that if these individuals are only getting one hour of genuine connection, of course, cognitive health is also going to begin to deteriorate as well. And there is data to show this. They've done meta-analysis where they've actually brought in volunteer youth. Now, these volunteer youths that they brought in were children of the community, presumably mostly growing up in stable, perhaps divorced environments at best, right? And they came in, and they interacted with the elderly at these living assisted facilities, and they already did some other research on this, and it shows that with time, the elderly improve not only in mental health, but also cognitively. It's impressive. Just by letting them interact in a very natural environment with volunteers from the community, their health in general begins to improve. But of course, the opposite is also the case, where these children, these youths that were coming in, they also began to learn more social skills, as well as applicable skills that they can apply in the future as well. And there is research supporting this completely, that we can also offer, if you guys want to see articles on this. So this is why I call it the posted idea, because it really is an amazing idea to bring these two different generations together and really allow for a lot of fulfillment and growth to happen later in life and early in life as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak that hasn't spoken or has pulled out a card to speak that hasn't been presented? There's nobody? So we can, we can start to discuss this. Does anybody on the council have a? Does anybody on the council have a...
I do.
Alderman Messina?
I'm taking Alderman Sorrentino first.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Thank you. Gosha, I think you could attest to this, to settle some curiosity that this council has argued with constituents. I believe the attorney that ran the meeting, not once, not twice, but three times, asked, does anyone else in this auditorium have any questions or any comments that they would like to make? Am I correct?
Gosha.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
So this is speaking of the CDC meeting...
Yes, I'm sorry. The CDC...
Okay. Everybody's hooked in.
Thank you for that.
Go ahead.
Were we not told that evening that that event was to be videotaped or taped itself? It was being taped or videotaped?
Gosha.
So unfortunately, because this was not a regular meeting place, we had to reschedule due to the capacity, we did not have the ability to record the meeting as we typically do with CDC meetings.
But it was never mentioned that evening?
The fact that it was supposed to be recorded? No.
Okay. All right, well, I'll just continue talking, because...
Go ahead.
A little bit similar pissed. I have, I've got an undergrad from DePaul University in mental health counseling and substance use counseling. I have a master's from DePaul University in applied professional studies, which piggybacked my bachelor's. I'm at Concordia College University now, to get my initials, because the previous two were not cake-prep accredited, which I know that you understand that. And my goal is to complete my terminal licensing, along with my doctorate, which would be my terminal education. So having all that, coupled with being a certified senior advisor, and speaking more than once to the Wooddale Senior Club, I felt that I just might have a foot up on the balance of this council and its members. So with that in mind, in good faith, I offered my assistance to the council. As I was reminded of an old commercial, which some of you may remember, Sid Sims, "An educated consumer is our best customer." So I felt that an educated community leader would be an excellent community leader. So I took it upon myself to send each member on this council a text, and here it is. "Hi, guys. I'd like to take a few minutes of your time to explain why I'm voting yes for the Radcliffe proposal. Would you prefer a conference call or an in-person? It's your call, just let me know. I'll be doing the same with the other three wards. The sooner the better. Thanks." I'm gonna ask my friend next to me to finish this slogan. Michael, once a Marine?
Always a Marine.
Once an orphan? Always an orphan. That's me. So because of this, because I'm trying to educate the rest of this team, who really has no clue about what's going on, and they're fielding questions from their constituents and being lost, I thought I could help. But one or more, and I'll be gender friendly and watch my filters and boundaries, and say, one or more spineless council member felt it prudent to send this to our attorney, which in turn, now, under legal advice, I need to recuse myself from voting on this crucial issue. But I got my point across, and you all know where I stand. So be it.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Messina?
I'm Alderman Messina. And this is somebody I served with, but also a good friend of mine, right? I would say to the council, right? This isn't voting about blocking off a street, this isn't about spending too much money on street repaving, okay? This is the effort you're putting in for children's lives. So this isn't a phone call to the guy next to you, or lady in front of you, or behind you, and asking, "What do you think I should do?" If you've taken the time, we've had months to think about this, and pour through this information, right? And anybody that's taken the time to call me and speak with me knows that I have spent more time on this than probably most of my work. How I have a job still behooves me. But we do this not for the money, we do this for the passion. And I've been doing this for, Jesus Christ, seven years now, and this is a topic that started here on my priority list. We had a conversation, Alan and I, it probably went a little lower, because I said, get your, you know, you need to get some things in place here, for a living, build technology, and place individuals in homes, and this is what you really need to make this happen. I stayed off social media because there was so much misinformation. We try to say we're a band of brothers, and I don't mean that to be gender specific, but band of brothers here, and I beg you guys to think about what's at stake here. So there's really two options, and I have a bunch of questions, so I'll let the chairman stop me at any point where I can go through. We stay here, we do nothing, right? Option one, we do nothing, you move on, maybe some of these kids get placed, maybe they don't. Option two, we, I guess you could call it take a risk, for those that are risk averse. We really define what success looks like, right? In my world, in corporate America, I throw hundreds of thousands of dollars in a pilot program, and I say, "Good luck. If it works, great. If not, you're probably gonna get fired." That's not gonna be the case here. This is, if it doesn't work, there are lives at stake, right? There is a lot of thought that has to go into this, and I feel like you guys have put a lot of work into this, and I still have a lot of questions. So those that have heard me speak at their HOA meetings have, hopefully can't see my cards, because I have wavered in multiple directions on how I feel. A couple thoughts. Someone mentioned an aha moment, I think it was Dr. Perez, maybe someone had an aha moment. I had an aha moment during the Highland Park shootings. I have, many of you know, a two-year-old twins. That child is two years old. For that meeting, when I'm back there, I'm not grabbing snacks, I'm asking Pat Bond, Meyer City Attorney, "Do you have any good recommendations for a state, you know, attorneys that can help with our will?" Because my wife and I are finally going on vacation after two years, after my son spent six months in the NICU, could do nothing, basically handcuffed, to our house and to a hospital. So we're doing that, but we unfortunately live in a society today where we actually have to put thought before we take a trip, that if, God forbid, something happens to us on this vacation, who's gonna take 'em? Who, more importantly, thanks to a friend of mine that briefed me on the life of, who's gonna teach them? Those that know me, I'm pretty cheap. I'm a good, I pride myself on deals and making things happen. Who's gonna teach my kids to write a check, to negotiate on something? I'm not. My parents don't speak great English, they won't, even if they were alive, to take these kids in, right? I had a lot of thinking to do, that's one of my aha moments, was that two-year-old, right? My wife shed a lot of tears over that. Now, I look at it that way, as I had, like I said, at a bunch of meetings, I said, "Okay, really strongly feel like there's no one in this room can honestly say this is a bad idea, bad at the premise, right? At the high level, this is a great idea." My questions, and I don't know who could answer them there, there are some operational questions, as I try to break down a program, which I know means peanuts, because in corporate America compared to lives. To say, operationally, if I could support this, what are the questions I need? Because unfortunately, as I've addressed to multiple people, there is so much misinformation. Some can say, you know, Alderman, Jacob and I are good friends, and we've wavered back and forth. We are the aldermen for this ward, that where this facility sits, right? We have been back and forth a million times on how we feel. We have questions. As you can imagine, there are risks for both sides, for both populations. So before I, I guess I kind of add some conditions and a little bit more of how I feel, I just was hoping to ask a few questions. And I don't know, Attorney Bond, if, how that would work.
Well, my suggestion would be get a motion on the floor, and motion's always in the affirmative, to get a motion on the floor, and then make, the questions have directed through the chair, and either Gosha, myself, or if necessary, the applicant could address those.
So I guess before I do that, since my comrade spoke his personal story, I'll speak about my personal story.
Well, before you continue, and I don't wanna be insensitive to the story, but it kinda gets off track. So I'll make a motion to approve the variation to the PUD for the Radcliffe Center.
Second.
Okay.
So maybe I will embarrass myself with my story.
Well...
No, no.
Again, I don't wanna be insensitive.
No, 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 no.
People get passionate, but refocus and bring it back, say what it is we're trying to decide. There's an existing building, an existing location. Existing functions that happened there, we're looking to introduce new functions to that building.
Yep.
And do all those things make sense?
Right. Intent is one thing, right? We know that's good intent. Operationally, and what we're voting on today is another.
Second.
I'm sorry?
Sunny second.
Sunny second.
You can't. Recuse the vote, recuse the second.
I'll second then.
All right.
I go?
Thank you.
So I'm an open book. You know, for those that know me, I've served down here for seven years. I didn't think of local politics, because it got very dirty, right? You do this for the good of the people, and then you do it for the kids, right? Two years ago, we stand here, and I think I've served my constituents quite well. You know, here we are, a week before my election, and somebody throws a lowball and sends out a flyer and talks about an incident in my path, right? Twenty-six years old, dating a girl for a long time, and I get in a stupid fight, in a bar fight, right? Charged with something, there is a point to this. I get charged, I don't care, I'm an open book, get charged with a felony. Now here I am, with a master's degree in a Fortune 500 company, in leadership, making a, what many have said, one mistake, right? So my life goes either one way of everything I've worked for, or goes another way. I go to all these hearings, parents are there, I had support, and I had a judge up there, I'll fast forward my story, that said, "This kid does not belong here. He has never been in trouble. Look at the support that he has. Hundred hours of community service, this kid is not getting touched with a felony, I'm not ruining his life. Go." You get chances. Some of us unfortunately get chances, because I've been lucky enough to have parents and a good support staff. Had that been somebody in the system, I don't think they'd have that chance. Unfortunately, they would be unfortunately tagged with this, as whether we wanna believe it or not, trouble. Sad. Now, the good news is, we move on, and I have built my life up from there, and guess what? My constituents showed up, and we kicked ass at the election. Because at the end of the day, people are inherently good. And when you see value in a person, it doesn't matter what their past is, it's what are you doing to improve your future? This program allows these individuals that opportunity. I have questions still, right? The intent is great, I have operational questions, but that is my story, and that is why I feel impassioned between that and the Highland Park shooting and that two-year-old orphan. But I'm going to stop for a minute, and we have a motion, we have a second, I'd love to hear from others, and then I'll ask some questions.
Are there any other questions specific? Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, so Alderman Messina and I, as he had said, we have both thought about this, and gone both ways. Originally, Alan reached out to me six months ago and said, "Would you support this?" And I said, "Well, it doesn't really matter if I would support it, it matters if the community's gonna support it. So you need to get support behind it, to get, you know, to do something like this." Since then, I've been back and forth, I see the positives, the negatives. You know, I've talked to my constituents and residents, and they have some questions, and I'm gonna ask a couple of them, but, you know, one of the comments I do have is, as much as I'm for this, I'm against it. I'm like fifty-fifty at the moment. I originally was for this because my mom was sick many years ago, and she was in and out of nursing homes. And I will tell you, as Alan mentioned, I would say my family, my sister, my father and I, were the only people that went there every single day to visit my mom. I saw all these people pushed into the hallways, nobody came to see them. It's just, you know, I mean, when I saw that, I used to be in tears when I would leave, and, you know, my mom was very lucky to have us, and she knew that. Unfortunately, you know, people get old, and everybody has their own lives, and they move on, and they don't find the time to go visit their parents or grandmas and grandpas. So that, and I thought this was a great idea, and that's why I thought this was a great idea, give them something. But the one thing that, you know, I thought about is, is this too soon? I mean, we have a high school here that, with kids that need community service. I mean, these kids need community service hours. Why not get some of these kids involved? You know, before we jump into something like this, why not go to Fenton High School and say, "Hey, this is our idea, you know? Could we get some of your students to commit to coming and spending some time with our seniors?" And kinda doing the same thing, except they already live in Wooddale or Bensonville or attend Fenton High School, or whatever other school, you know, they attend here. So that was one of my comments, is, that would have been kind of my first approach, is go to this high school, or to the junior high. Number two, I've read and heard that apparently there's a waiting list of seniors to get into the facility. So now I have to look at this, and I'm thinking to myself, from what I understand, and maybe I'm incorrect, and, you know, if Alan could answer, maybe, but to me, it sounds like the memory care center would make more money allowing these seniors than with students in. So now I have to go to, why would, why would you, A, if you have a list of people coming in, why aren't you filling that list? I mean, why is the building vacant? I mean, I would think if you have a list, and you're a businessman, you wanna keep, you know, you wanna continue to pay your bills, so you would, of course, start letting people in. So now I have to question a little bit, why the sudden change? Why are we now going to students, and we're actually gonna lose money, because you're gonna make less money with the students coming in? And that, one of the other things is, and I did hear that the superintendent supported this, but from what I understand, he did not actually support this, he was neutral in this. And like I said, I did wanna find, ask a couple questions, if I may. One of the things that worries me is, Wooddale were a growing community, we're doing a lot to grow the community, we're trying to build, you know, bring developers into town, we're gonna be building an apartment complex next door in the future, we have a lot of, lot of things, good things happening. But as it sits right now, there's really not a whole heck of a lot to do for the kids. So one of my questions is, what are these kids gonna do? I mean, you know, when I was a kid, I would go out, play with my friends, go to the park, do this, you know? Where are these kids gonna go? I mean, they're on Irving Park, kind of stranded in the middle of nowhere, there's no residents around them, because it's all commercial properties, so what are these kids gonna do for recreation? That would be one of my questions. Two, I kind of was reading the rules, at first I was told, or from what I understood, that as soon as one of the students breaks the rules, they're basically thrown out of the program, but then, in doing some reading, it seems like there's all these steps before that could happen. So that's a little concerning to me, and let's see here. As far as spending money, who, did the student, I mean, you know, face it, I mean, you know, if you're a kid and you have nothing to do, you, you know, you want to go to the grocery store, buy some candy, whatever, go get a ice cream cone, where do you have, you know, are these kids going to have money? Does somebody, does the state give them some kind of allowance? And, because I, I read that they have to set up a bank account, but again, I don't know where the money comes, so it didn't really say, from what I was reading, where the kids are going to get the money from. And I think that, well, the other question is, right now, I, I think we could all see this with COVID and everything. You look through the community, and you see places closing early. I've driven by, in Elmhurst, there's a Kentucky Fried Chicken, it's closed at, you know, six o'clock, I mean, it's closed. You could go to the drive-thru, but they don't, they can't get enough people to work there. Starbucks, you go to Starbucks, Starbucks closes, and one, at some point, one point in time, the one here in Wooddale, actually was closed because they did not have enough staff. So I'm a little concerned that
How about the students from Fenton, why don't they go get work there?
So I'm just a little concerned with all, all these job openings, you know, how are you going to fulfill the amount of staff that you need? That's pretty much my list of questions I had, you know, I don't know if they could be addressed or answered. I mean, it would be nice if we could get an answer, but
Mr. Bond, do you want to?
Yeah, a couple of those were the testimony of the, of the applicant at the public hearing. With respect to the spending money, the applicant testified that the participants would be eligible for both onsite and offsite job opportunities that would enable them to earn spending money for that, for that. The other question he had as to the activities, the applicant testified at the public hearing, there were onsite activities planned through vocational program, as well as planned supervised interactions between participants and senior residents, and that they would be able to do, let me see, there was another, they'd be able to engage in other age-appropriate recreational activities like any other teen child residing in the city, subject to age-appropriate curfews.
May be recognized. Alderman Messina.
Good questions, and I wish you could have broke them down, but I think I had a resident call me before I came here and then I actually answered your question, right? One of my concerns was, all right, you got to ask that, right, and you come down, where, where are kids going to go, right? I'll reiterate, great idea, maybe not the right facility, is what some had said, some, not me. She made a great point. Their kid, majority of them are kids, right? You can make the assumption that they're going to walk around the corner to Woody's and have a good time, walk across the street to 7-Eleven, ask them to buy them booze, or you can take the benefit of the doubt, right, and give these kids a shot and say, "Well, maybe they can go across the street to the park," right? I'm farther from a park than these kids will be, does that make, my kids are going to be more at risk than, than these kids? No. They can go to the bowling alley, which I know someone mentioned, right, they can go there. I also know, because I spent an entire day talking to somebody, a counselor, that, correct me if I'm wrong, they don't just go, it isn't wake up, go to school, do extracurriculars if they have any, come home, as they said, play on TikTok, and then go to bed, right? There are activities planned where the staff, and I can't answer whether, what staff or which staff members, take them out for dinner. And they take them out to dinner, take them out to movies, they go as a collective group. Kind of like if you had a bunch, like you have a bunch of siblings, like I did, we travel in packs, that's what they do. Hopefully, that answers your questions about what they would do for, for extracurriculars. Do you want me to answer some of the other ones? I, I, I'm happy to answer them for you if we can't, if the applicant can't answer them.
No, no, no. So the, the answer you gave, I don't know that that's actually the answer? Because you never ran the facility, and nobody knows what the facility is going to look like. Granted, no, no, we're not going to have a debate, so granted, right, that
You need to run a facility to know where to walk to a park?
Can
And go to walk to a bowling alley?
Can I speak?
You can't, you made no sense.
Can I speak?
Go ahead.
Thank you. All right. Can you be respectful?
I'm very
You want to be, no, you're not, right now. So this is an emotional issue, right? And we all agree that this is something that hasn't been tried before. And we've heard a lot of emotional stories, and that's what makes it emotional, right? It hits home to almost everybody up here at different levels. But the question is, is that facility with that group of people, or multiple groups of people, senior and memory care people, the right place to then introduce foster care children? I'm not making any judgment on what level they're at, if they're good or if they're bad. I would agree with my counterpart, they're inherently good. Blessed the dulls, you know, when they get a little too tired, then they get, they're like little terrorists, but hey, that was my weekend. But those are, those are the things that we have to look at, you know? Introducing those groups with the other groups, how does that mix work? We don't know, right? We, we've heard people talk that have more knowledge in the field than I do, that parts of those things work, right? But that's a small piece of the, of the puzzle, right? That's not the, the sole thing. We're, we're going to introduce living for, and again, here's where some inconsistencies are, because it says fourteen to twenty, and some of the documents presented, it's thirteen to twenty-one. I'm not sure which one is applicable. Then to Alderman Jacob's point of the comment that if, if the, the child or kid or resident acts up, because they're varying ages, I don't know if they're kids at twenty-one, then we'll just kick them out of the program, and if you read the policies, procedures manuals that you guys put forward, and the building policy that you put forward, and all those, they lay out, lay out a path for multiple interactions or disciplinary processes before you get to the kick-out stage. And that makes sense, I'm not saying it's good or bad.
But it's not true at the Radcliffe. I didn't clue that up there.
Okay, well, I'll, since we were touching on it specifically.
Thank you.
The, the program is fundamentally for the seniors, and kids are the beneficiaries, but only the right kids. So who gets let into this program is not the twenty-one thousand kids that are in the program. Every kid in the program has rights, and when you read the rights in the Omega Book, those are the kids' rights when they're youth in care. Those rights need to exist. They do not exist at the Radcliffe. Kids will sign a contract where it gives them the rights from the Omega place.
So I hear what you say, and, and that's what you said before, I hear you loud and clear, but the documents you presented
Right, right, I presented the Omega documents.
Don't state that, so I can only go, I'm reading what you gave me, so
Understood, I, forgive me, Ms. Woods, I, I created that confusion. I presented the Omega House rules, which are kids' rights in the legal system. I also presented the code of ethics and code of honor that it takes to be in the privileged system. So you would get thrown out immediately at my will of the Radcliffe privileged system, and you would have all kinds of rights over at the Omega House. It is the essence of how we're able to filter who gets in this program. If you and I
Okay, I think, I think we addressed it, so you're saying that, because we could go on for, for hours, right?
I want to make sure
Yeah. Like I say, I'm just reading the documents you gave me, and there's, a lot of the documents are conflicting, right? You read in one place it says this, and in another place it says that, you go through the You go through the documents, and, and the words change, the names change, and maybe it's just my suspicious nature, you know, somebody reads a lot of contracts.
You're based for that.
And, you know, throughout there, Radcliffe Career Academy is mentioned, then it changes to Radcliffe Vocational Academy, which is Radcliffe Generational Academy, right? So just in that process, there's four different, so do all three exist? Were they, just because somebody, when they were typing it up quickly?
No, no, no. We, we started out with the Radcliffe Career Academy.
There are two programs, the intergenerational engagement program, which is the focus on the seniors. The Radcliffe Vocational Academy, that is a change. We started out calling it the Radcliffe Career Academy, and we recognize the difference between careers and vocations. So during this process, it, it evolved from the Radcliffe Career Academy to the Radcliffe Vocational Academy.
Okay, so they all kind of exist at different levels
Yeah.
on different sides of the building. Again, going back to, you know, this is a model program, it's never been tried, so it's confusing trying to put all the pieces together when you read this, when there's nothing to
There's no blueprint.
If I was reading about any other subject, I could go out and get some papers around it and go, okay, well, that doesn't match this. So thank you for
Sure.
for clearing that up, but, no, you can, you can sit down. So, but going back to the, the question, and, and the question is, putting those groups together in a living environment, and then in an educational environment, turning that into a school and a foster care facility, does that make sense in that location with the existing groups? So I'm sure all the other stories are, are good, I, I feel them, but my charge is to, to look at the facts in front of me and, and the, the mixes of that building. And then a, a statement was made that, you know, once you okay it, nobody can change it. That's what they said about the original PUD, and yet, here we are. So that being said, anything can be changed at any time. Alderman Messina, I know that you had some
Yeah.
Questions, concerns.
I'm done advocating for what I, I feel, right? And I answered some of your questions, but like I said before, is it okay if Mr. Semeca approaches, so he can answer some of the questions that I've gotten, or Alderman Jacob and I have gotten from our constituents?
Can, can we hear what the question, and we'll see if that makes sense for them to
Yeah, I know some of those questions you went through.
Not that we cut them off, but
Yeah.
And the only reason, in part being there was a public hearing where testimony was taken under oath, and I think between Gosha and I, we may be able to
So can I give my understanding of the answer based on what I've read? And someone could, could tell me otherwise, if it's not accurate?
Sure.
Your opinion of what it is?
My understanding of reading and speaking and all that fun stuff I've spent the last week doing it. I had heard that when it came to taxpayer dollars, funding, there would be sixty-eight students that would be placed into the school systems. One place I read, well, actually, let's just focus on what was in your testimony, was that it was one point two times is what would the distribution would be from the state. Hundred and twenty percent, basically, from the state to the school.
So can I, can I interject, just, I think, just, on that line?
You're the committee, yeah, you're the chairman, go ahead.
Just to help you
Yeah.
and, and me to understand, because I don't understand that question. Why would the state pay a hundred and twenty percent to the school on something that they pay naturally if you're a resident of the community? What is, what is, where's that come from?
It's law. I, I, it's law. I spend time, I, sorry, go, if you have your answer, I'll, you said to give my understanding from the phone calls I've made is, it's law, it's law, there is law that's there to protect those that are in the system or underprivileged. Mr. Dr. Semeca.
Absolutely. I'll read you a document from Jody Whitlow, who is the person who actually funds these things. Her job is funding and distribution services for the Illinois State Board of Education. When the DCFS places a student in a group home, the district where the group home is located can claim an orphanage tuition. The regular tuition can be claimed under the eighteen-point-three regulation, goes on here to describe it, based on the attendance, at one point two times the district per capita tuition. So if you take the per capita tuition, at Fenton, it's about eleven thousand dollars. You put a kid in a currently empty seat at that school, the school would receive eleven thousand dollars times one point two, so they would receive a hundred and twenty percent. This is from a law that was put together in nineteen sixty-five, when they still use the words orphan. It's the Elementary and Secondary Education Act.
Okay, thank you.
Do you mind staying up there? Chairman, may I be heard for my other question?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Or not my question, my, my
I just don't want this to be a debate, but go ahead.
No, it's not a debate, these are questions or understandings, right? The next conversation that came up was around programming hours, a concern, a very valid concern from a resident. You wake up, maybe you say your prayers, you get dressed, you run to school, you work, you're there all day at school. You maybe have extracurricular activities, you do your homework, your chores, typical day, day in the life of. Maybe you go on TikTok, I think he even said. When reading this, my understanding is they would get one to two hours of programming hours, one to two programming, programming hours per week. Can you, that is what I understood. So we're calling this, this intergenerational program, but they're only getting one to two hours a week?
The ratio is two to one between the seniors and the students. If there are a hundred and twenty seniors in the building and sixty students, and eighty percent of them are involved with each other at any given time, that leaves us with a two-to-one ratio. So for every hour of invested time with the youth, there'd be two hours of receiving time with the seniors. So that, that's where those two numbers came from. The amount of time that we're requiring, is a little bit complicated. The amount of time that we're requiring the youth be involved with seniors is a reasonable amount of time, depending on what's going on in that youth's life. My, as a grandchild, you can put a lot of time in sometimes and a little time in other times. That's why such a large group is so necessary for this. It is not a prescribed amount of time. If we prescribe the time, it's like the events that we have now, where Fenton kids call up two weeks before their volunteering hours are due and say, "I got to volunteer at the old people's home." This isn't intergenerational engagement, this is a kid volunteering to get through his time. The quality of intergenerational engagement has to do very much with the willingness, not the requirement, of both parties involved.
Okay, I think that's a good
Thank you for your
We, we, we've got the answer.
So the next one, under the special use standards, number six, states, "Requiring adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or necessary facilities be provided, or have been provided." And one of the, the concerns that were out there, as I mentioned with talking to a bunch of folks, is exactly, is that condition met, right? As, I was a little disappointed that there were, there would be no modifications to the existing building. My understanding, there would be no, so how would you meet that requirement, number six, which requires adequate, adequate utilities? Which is a broad statement.
When the building was designed, it's very unusual in senior care. It's fifty percent shared spaces and only fifty percent suites. This allows for a lot of activity space inside, inside the building. We're not dealing with eight and ten and twelve-year-olds, we're dealing with fourteen to twenty-year-olds who age out of the program when they're twenty-one, to clarify that other question. These are intellects, right? These aren't kids looking for a basketball hoop, these are kids doing things. When they sign up in the program, they sign up, this code of ethics and code of honor is their handbook for all the things they're required to do.
Mr. Semeca, I mean, we've covered that part, I think yours was a mechanical function
The adequate, yeah, water No, no, I was
Bathing showers
Well, we'll finally use water.
No, just the first part, adequate facilities, right? Kids are active, otherwise, I think he termed it as a, a prison yard. But I mean, what are your, what are your plans, what are the plans, you know, to meet that requirement of adequate facility?
Well, kids live very regimented lives, there is no playing in the yard. We, we simply don't have that and don't need to provide that, there's no shortage of places for kids to go. And again, our kids have thirty-six full-time employees supervising them, so it's like having thirty-six parents. So if four kids were willing to go to the bowling alley, or interested in going to the bowling alley, we would send an adult supervisor with them. We've got thirty-six full-time employees keeping an eye on these kids, it's like having thirty-six parents, right? So
Does that answer your
So you have adequate space, fifty-fifty space, right? Living space, adequate space, open space, kind of like an office space. I say, guess what, you should have open space, and you guys could sit on, you know, roll around the floor and play Xbox
There is a lot of
in my office, now we we've changed that around, and now they can do different activities.
We have more play space than most houses.
Okay. The other question I had, and I know the answer, so I'll actually say the answer, but I'm hoping you can, because this again goes back to the misinformation around this being a vocational academy. We talked about the concern about limited hours, right? It sounds like that can vary. What are the other vocational skills that are being taught to these individuals?
Some of what the seniors will teach is civility, is things that our grandparents taught us, you know, volunteering, getting involved with people, the things that caused us to grow up and join Rotary Club and Alliance Club and be on the city council, right? So that'll come from the seniors in a very organic way. The absolute things that we'll be focused on are how are you building your career? What are the extracurricular activities you're doing to build your career? You identify what kind of a career you want to have. What are you doing to make sure that your hobbies, your lifestyle, everything you're involved with is moving you into a career path? It's a giant gap for foster kids, and this is how we intend to fill it.
Okay. I'm just going to go right to the point, I guess, because I'm sure at some point I'm going to get yelled at. So I like the conditions that the CDC put out, right? I do think that stopgap of one year protects us. So for those that are risk averse.
Can you, can you help me? Because I don't know how that protects us.
One year?
Yeah.
How does it hurt you? I guess, can you enlighten?
You made the statement. I want to know how it protects it.
You have a safeguard. They have a safeguard of staff, just like Fenton High School, just like Uvalde Elementary had. Safeguards in place, security in place, active shooter drills in place.
You just switched gears.
Well, what I'm saying to you, hold on, let me finish. I always let you finish, and let me finish. So there's these safeguards in place. The question, you asked the risk. There are inherent risks that somebody could walk in tomorrow to this facility, and God forbid, something could happen. There's also a risk with these individuals that something could happen. Is your assumption that these individuals, that was been made very clear, they're not delinquents, they are youths in care, do you feel that our risk is increased as introducing these youths in care? That two-year-old that is orphan, as opposed to a 75-year-old senior? That's my question to you. Is there more, why is there?
That's irrelevant to the statement you made. The statement you made was the CDC imposed three requirements, and that you felt that that protected us. I just asked you.
You're not answering the question.
Why it was that you felt that. And then you went onto a shooting in another state, which had nothing to do with what we were talking about.
Sorry, multiple things. So my, when I look at the conditions, because I know you won't answer the question, I don't think there's additional risk by introducing these individuals. However, in the spirit of, I've launched many pilots in the corporate world that I ask for millions of dollars and I get peanuts. And they say, be scrappy and make it work. Imagine what it'll do for your career. Yet to see that. But that's what I'm telling. So my condition that I'd introduce to the council up here is a couple things. One, can we scale this pilot down to fewer children? That was one. Can you guys make an investment in a dedicated recreational area? So that maybe there's that risk that these individuals have other things, a weight room, a workout room, reading room, things that are, I know you have some of already. That's my other one. I believe this was already in there, but withdrawal of one of the conditions, excuse me, withdrawal if one of the conditions were not met. That was, I think, already on there. And then could you agree to an increase in the number of programming hours? Those are some of the, going right to the point.
Okay, right to the point.
Right. So again, now we're going to engage in the debate. Are you saying that that's what you would want added?
Added to this? We have a motion, we have a second. I'm saying, before we go to a roll call, yeah, I would like to see those conditions, if the petitioner could agree to those. Is that something we can modify?
I don't agree. I would like to vote on what the motion is here. But I think that the plan or system that they set in place, is set in place, and those numbers were picked for a reason. There's probably a ratio of the fourth floor and space and rooms and people and to have less.
We picked those numbers very thoughtfully. I would happily, we don't use our basement with seniors. I would be happy to, and I could restrict it the same way, and allow that basement area to become more kids' recreation space. I'm a little bit concerned that concerned neighbors would be offended by an outdoor play space.
Okay. So you were about, you were about to say the number, is that correct, Alderman Woods, something about risk concern?
I was saying that they probably came up with that number.
Yeah, we've been very thoughtful about that number.
And I'm not that guy. I'm not here to design their system.
Yep.
I'm just giving you my opinion.
May I, if I could add?
Sure.
Goes back to my concern about intent, and probably a lot of people's concern about intent.
Well, I can.
If I could tell you that you could give my support and save 20 lives instead of 60 lives, is that something you could live with?
I'd like to save 60, because the project is, the focus here is intergenerational engagement for the seniors. And as we reduce the number of kids involved, we increase the burden upon the kids to really be engaged with the seniors. So we were very thoughtful. Many psychologists were involved at the discussion about how this program comes together. Stanford University was involved. And 60 to 120 really is kind of a magic formula that leaves no burden on kids. Kids' lives are cyclical. They become very busy if they're involved with a particular sport. The kid's kind of out of the intergenerational program at that time. We don't want to force kids into anything, just like we don't want to force seniors into it. That's the difference between bringing kids from the high school and saying, you got to do your 24 hours, and letting these intergenerational engagement relationships really happen naturally.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Messina, do you have, do you have a, Alderman Messina?
No, now I was able to just go to the point, get my conditions, so thank you.
Alderman Jacob.
This is a question for either Attorney Bond or Gosia. And maybe I, so we, there were three conditions on there. One of the conditions were to visit this once a year. So does that mean, if we say yes today in a year, it doesn't seem to be working, can we pull the, at that time, say, we're going to disallow this?
So that was the concept behind that condition, although I don't know how you would make, how you would monitor that condition. We're not going to have a person embedded from the city into the program?
You can't.
And if we did, I certainly will admit that I would know if it was going good or bad, right? And to make an assessment without knowledge of how it actually works would be wrong.
One of my promises is that there's three advisory committees. One is made up of people in the community in Wooddale, just people that live in the neighborhood. The other is residents and family members that, excuse me, residents of seniors that live in the community. And the other is family members and employees. Those three individual advisory committees will continue to hone and to craft this so that it works in the world-class way that we're intending it to. It can't just be one guy's idea, right? We've organized a team of brilliant, beautiful people, and there's no reason to stop now. Advisory committees, people from the neighborhood, would be wonderful additions to how this works. For instance, actually.
Right, that is, okay, so I got what you're saying. But that's not a yes, no, on, off?
I can give you the yes, no.
Right, that's a follow, that's an improvement committee.
I collect hundreds, I collect hundreds of thousands of dollars a month in rents in order to pay my employees and to pay the, all the other bills that are involved at the place. Those people are very close to these youth. If this program has a glitch, if this program doesn't work, if this program has a trouble to youth, I have 120 judges, their sons, their daughters and daughters-in-law, who all have my phone number. This program would be shut off far before it becomes a problem that you guys see. You're right, you'll never see a problem. This program will go away.
That's a nice sentiment, but we don't know that to be true.
It's mathematically, it's mathematically true. It's mathematically true.
Uvalde wasn't supposed to happen. It happened. Highland Park was supposed to have, not happen, it happened.
Okay, okay. First of all, you were right. Nice.
Well, sorry, that's, I mean.
I get you can rattle off all the shootings at the schools.
I can.
Alderman Jacob, then I'm going to go.
Okay, yeah. I just want to ask that question from Attorney Bond. No offense, but he is the attorney, so I want to know, with the conditions, can we, if a year goes by, can we say, this isn't working, we're shutting this program down?
It's not that easy. You would have to go through, there's a process if a special, you grant a special use and it's no longer confined to the special use. In my opinion, that simply those three conditions not being satisfied may not be sufficient grounds for the termination of that special use.
Alderman Jacob.
Is there a condition we could put on there where we can do that?
Well, it would be a change in the use. And that's, you're granting, what the, the motion before you is to grant amendment to the special use. So what you're doing is you're granting this use. You're not, you don't have any control over the internal operation. It's a zoning-related decision for that particular use. That's what it was when it came before you initially as a PUD. The use that you authorized was that assisted living memory care, that use and that use only. There's, the purpose for this, these proceedings is it's an amendment to that. So as long as it is still engaging in that use, the revocation of that special use, and there is a process for doing that, there would not be a basis for failure to adhere to one of those three conditions. And the current motion, just for the, for the record, the current motion on the table is amendment to special use for planned unit development, PUD for Radcliffe located at 276 East Irving Park Road, for that additional use, in addition to the senior assisted living.
Just one follow-up. So I understand what you're saying, but I know we could rezone, I mean, the city council could rezone something. We have the ability to do that. So if this wasn't working out for whatever reason, we couldn't say, okay, you know what, we're going to rezone this, or we're not going to allow this anymore, or phase it out?
No, you can't. First of all, you already granted the special use. It's, and you can't spot zone. So if you just, because you don't like a use, you can't say, that use is no longer allowed here. That's not permitted. That's spot zoning under Illinois law and virtually every other state. That's prohibited.
Okay, thank you. The intent of this CDC and of me was to put you in control.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, regarding the conditions, I've, I've got a couple comments. The conditions, so if we put the conditions, you know, personally, I'd like to vote on this, on the merits of the project. If we add the conditions, and in a year, I don't know, maybe we've heard complaints or whatever, something's not going right, who up here is going to throw out 60 kids?
Unfortunately, Mr. Lee, I would, I would have to. My income there and the ability to pay.
Can I, this is not a debate, number one.
I'm sorry.
All right, I'll raise my hand. I know I would.
The mayor has the floor right now.
Oh, I'm not saying anything. I'm raising my hand. He asked a question.
So it's on the merits. I wouldn't want to be throwing 60 kids out in a year if something went wrong, number one. So I would prefer we stay on the merits of the program. Now, you have a high standard, which is commendable.
Thank you.
You just, you also said that you bought the building two years ago, and I was on the council when this project was starting, and this was part of EB funding, and people got citizenships for this. And then there was another company that came in, and maybe a second nursing home. Hold on, I'm not done. And you might be the third. Either the second or the third, I'm not sure. And nothing to say that you couldn't change hands again. And I also have questions. On an academy, so if it's an academy, is that registered as a school? So that also gets tax incentives for real estate taxes? So I don't, you know, I'm not sure of that stuff. But again, I don't have guarantees that you're going to stay. I know I'm going to die here because I remodeled my house purposely so I die in this community. I don't know about you.
I understand. Do I answer the question I?
No. So Alderman Messina, you wanted to make a statement?
I just wanted to raise my hand and say that, yeah, sometimes you have to make hard decisions. So like, goes back. You were making a hard decision tonight. You either A, you make a choice, and guess what? What if the alternative happens in a year, as 60 people come up here and shake your hand and say, thank you, I've just become a chef, or thank you, I've just got an opportunity to change my life? You got to look, that's the risk. You're in Vegas today, my friend.
I don't like Vegas.
I know. Well, there's a chance.
Okay, so are there any other questions? There being none? The motion on the floor is to approve the amendment to the special use planned unit development for the Radcliffe located at 276 East Irving Park Road. And are we, just for clarity, are we including the three?
The three.
Okay, so we're X-ing off those three things that were on the CDC, just the motion as it stands.
So sorry, for clarity, so we're not going to include what the CDC recommended?
Correct, the three things that the CDC recommended.
Okay, so would not be a one-year.
Correct, correct. Roll call.
Go ahead.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Curialy?
No.
Alderman Jacob? Alderman Ames?
No.
Alderman Messina?
On this motion, no.
Alderman Sosmarski?
No.
Alderman Woods?
No. So that motion fails. Next, Alderman Messina, you have a question?
Can I bring up a second motion? An alternative motion? To include those three conditions?
Well, the underlying motion failed, so there's nothing to, it'd be a way of amendment. So if you wanted to add, to add the three conditions, I assume?
Yeah, that was my intent of why I voted no, is to include that. And this, otherwise, is of course stacked against.
What would the legal?
Well, if you would have to move to, yeah, move to reconsider the motion that was just voted on. And then if that passes, then you would have a motion to amend the motion. And if that gets a second, you vote on that. If that goes down, then you go back to the main motion and vote on that.
Can I acknowledge the chairman?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Messina.
So I'd like to make a motion to reconsider this motion with the conditions.
Just do the first yet to do. First, be able to get it reconsidered.
Okay, so just a very simple, okay. Then I'd like to make a motion for this to be reconsidered for vote.
Second.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Curialy?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
No.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sosmarski?
No.
Alderman Woods?
No. That fails. Next items to be considered at meetings.
If I may, Pat, wouldn't there be an opportunity for any council member to bring a different motion, an alternate motion, without going through reconsideration?
Well, if it's on that, on an amendment to the special.
It's on, and I'm not going to argue or debate, but if it's on an amendment to the special use to the planned unit development for that particular use, no. So that, that's the end.
I'm not sure that that was, that's correct. I think what was brought before to this council was the recommendation of the CDC, which had three conditions.
And that's a recommendation of the CDC only. This is an independent body that makes a recommendation to the city council. They can accept or reject the amendments recommended by the CDC. The initial motion did not include that. There was an attempt to include those conditions, and that was, the motion was not reconsidered for inclusion of that. So there's no action taken on the additional conditions.
I understand that, but the question is, why wouldn't another Alderman have the ability to bring a different motion to be heard and considered? I guess that's my question.
I mean, Mr. Shapiro, right?
Yes, sir.
Attorney.
Yes, I represent the applicant.
This is the place for debate, and really technically haven't been recognized.
Would you recognize me now, sir?
Is it going to be along the same lines that we've been talking about, that you want to?
I just would like clarification on a legal issue under the procedures that both Pat and I are very familiar with.
Right. I don't think that we're set up in this format.
Yeah, I'd certainly be willing to talk to the council.
Although you can speak to Attorney Bond.
That's fine, Alderman Woods, and I appreciate that. But the reason I'm bringing this up is because if there's an opportunity, and I believe there is under Roberts rules, for another councilman to bring up a motion, even though the first motion has failed, having been an elected official myself.